I'll do it later. It's four o'clock, so I'd like to call the Planning Commission Comprehensive Plan Update Work Session to order. Heather, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Granger.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Clea.
Here.
Ms. Gubach.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
The agenda says that we're going to be having a presentation by Watercrest Williamsburg. I've just been informed that they were not able to come today, so we will be tabling that for a later meeting. And so we will start with our review of Chapter Six, the Housing Draft, which we saw one month ago.
That's correct.
And.
Since that meeting, I told you I was going to get the average lot cost by neighborhood. So that's the chart. I'd add it to the chapter in which it's on the overhead of up on the slides that you can see. So basically what I did is I took out the commercial areas, the commercial quarters. I took out the apartment complexes. I did not put downtown in there because I think we're going to talk about the downtown as part of the economic section and talk about residential in that. So this is basically what I would say are our neighborhoods where a family or someone wanted to buy into the city, into a neighborhood. And so this is, this is the list I came up with. So if you look at that, there were 3,331 lots. And I broke them down by neighborhood and the, the number of units in the neighborhood and the average cost per lot or unit. And I got that information from the Assessors Office. What I did is he, he has a list of neighborhoods and then I have a list of planning neighborhoods. So I took our list of planning neighborhoods and I went down the list and made sure I took out like churches or other types of uses that were not residential out of the numbers so that we got a true number of the cost of what a house would be in, in any of those neighborhoods. So that's what you have up on the overhead. And then when I did that, I looked at comparing the data. And I broke it down into the income categories that Dr. Stafford had in the previous part of the housing plan. And when you look at the very low household income, which is less than $21,160, and we only have one neighborhood, which is the Jamestown Commons neighborhood. And unless, a lot of people wouldn't know where Jamestown Commons is. That's the neighborhood, the little 12-unit development that's behind the 7-Eleven adjacent to right 199. So that's the only neighborhood that would fall into the very low-income household. And then when you look at the low-income category, which is between roughly $21,000 to just a little over $35,000, with a maximum house, house price of $146,300, there were 10 neighborhoods. And those 10 neighborhoods are Barclay Square, Bristol Commons, Highland Park, again Jamestown Commons, Patriot, Pepper Tree, Powhatan Park, Shallows Square, Village Green, and Whale Subdivision, which has a total of 609 units. So out of our units in the city, only 609 of those 3,331 are available to the very low and low-income category. In the moderate income, we have five new neighborhoods, which are Campus Court, Claiborne, Proustley, Skipwith, and Westgate, which takes our totals up to 15 neighborhoods and 915 lots or units. We have a lot in the middle-income category, and the middle income is basically just under $50,000 to just around $70,000, with a maximum house price of just over $290. This category contains 13 neighborhoods of Capitol Heights, City Green, Crispus Addicts, Forest Hill area, Parkway Towns, Pine Crest, Quarter Path, Skipwith, Strawberry Plains, The Oaks, West Williamsburg, Woodlands, and Wyndham, for a total of 28 neighborhoods with an additional 923 lots or units. The upper income, we had 33 neighborhoods. And the upper income is income of $70,530 with a maximum house price above $292,600. In that category, we have 1,493 units for a total of, as I mentioned, 3,331. So what I've, what you get from this information is we have 609 units of the total 331 units that are available, which equals to just under 20% of the total number of units in the city that is in the low and very low income with all of our 61 neighborhoods that you see on this list. So I think this sort of supports the information that Dr. Stafford mentioned in her presentation and in the earlier parts of this chapter. I just thought it was very interesting to see the numbers themselves and the number of units and put numbers and, and lot numbers to the, to the types, types of housing units and how many we have of those in the, in the city. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Carolyn, I think with the, with the commercial neighborhoods which were taken out, apartment buildings were also taken out and complexes. And it is that Merrimack Crossing was not included in the list.
I took out all the apartment complexes because those are not really places where you could go in and buy. So this is basically looking at if you were a family or someone who wanted to buy a house in the city, these are the neighborhoods you would be looking at.
Do you think?
The downtown area and the commercial areas, I think we'll hit, we'll touch on that when we do the economic development section because we're really looking at McHughes Development and those types of areas. And we'll have the numbers for those areas also when that comes up.
My curiosity is seeing how those shift the numbers on available housing for low-income and low, low-income families.
Yeah, I'm also doing a list of rental incomes based on information. We're doing a Neighborhood Balance Committee.
Okay.
The college is giving us the, the rental incomes for the units on campus. I'm getting the information right now on the rental incomes for our apartment complexes.
Okay, great.
So I think that's good information to know also.
Absolutely.
So when I, when I read through this, this section, I thought it was fantastic to see it gathered up like this. I did have a couple of questions about just how some of the numbers are brought together because some of the combinations of numbers don't mean, don't make sense to me. So you say that there are 12 lots in the very low income.
Right.
And 609 in the low income.
But then when you gather it together, you're still at 609 versus like 621 between those two? I counted the, I took each one and added them to the next one.
To the, oh, okay, to the next one. That's how.
Right. That's why, if you notice, I put Jamestown Commons into that list for the 609.
Got it. Okay, so that's why it's still 609.
I did it the other way and it seemed a little confusing.
No, no, I, I liked the combining of things. So then when you combine middle inc, moderate income and middle income and you get to the 1,838, when you get to the summary piece, it's at 1229 on page 47.
Yeah, I think what I did there, and it's probably confusing, I could change it, is I had the, the middle income. I took the, the 915 and the other, and you got the 1,838.
Right.
So I can see where that, that second bullet in there and I can fix that.
Okay, and so I guess in, just stylistically, I think it would be really nice if the summary piece of in the very low and low, which is at the last paragraph of that page, and then those two other things, if they were all on one page, and maybe that would follow with a pie chart that shows what a small sliver we have for low income that we have, you know, nearly equivalent, you know, on the high and the middle ground, but this tiny little thing that's, is a pie. I thought that would be really nice.
We can do that.
I also had a question, just in terms, this was a big piece of what we talked about last time in that in starting to work our way through this, we were, you know, we were realizing that this is, you know, in super quantity Sarah's report. And we do now have this introductory paragraph that says this, what follows. The first part of what follows is this report of, of Dr. Sarah Stafford of the college. But in looking through, in reading through it, it's like until you get to page 45, it's all Sarah's report, right? So should that not just be clear that what follows is Sarah's report and that on page 45 is where we have staff for community analysis of it? Because you're reading and you're keeping on like looking and I don't, I think we should give her credit and not assume that this is our perception of it or, or our take on it. That's the report. What follows in those final pages is what we're, okay? Those were my comments.
I, I have a few. I just, a small thing on, on the new chart. I think this, the summary, it looks to me like what you've done is added the average cost per unit in B through H and then H through R and then R through Y. I don't think that adds.
Which chart?
I'm sorry, on the, the one that's on the screen.
Uh huh.
The, the 6 million, 6.8 million, 7.2 million, and the 7 million or 6.9 whatever million. It looks to me like that's just a summary, a sum of the numbers above.
One above it.
I don't think that provides any useful information. And in fact, it might, yeah, it might even be confusing to people. So I'd be inclined to just.
Just take the numbers out.
Delete the six mil, just that summary number. Just delete that. I think the average cost per unit is essential. But the summary of those averages just doesn't have any utility, I don't think.
Right. It is just random by alphabetical order, which doesn't tell, yeah, good, great point.
And I did it by alphabet because that's how you want it all together.
Oh, no, that's. Oh, no, no, no.
That part is, that part is good.
Right. It's just those, that big number at the bottom. Is not meaningful. The, the, in terms of, I think we want to be a little bit careful about how we present this. And, and some of the questions that I had, kind of going through this again, were the same questions that I had for Sarah the first time, which is there's some, there's some important data in here that's coming from, I think, multiple sources. And the multiple sources aren't the same. And so it does make it a little bit harder, I mean, I think just literally harder, to draw definitive conclusions about the housing stock. And I, I have no doubt at all that we have a real challenge with affordable housing in this, in this community. I think it's especially acute with rental housing. But the report concludes by focusing on housing for purchase. And so I, I think actually it's clearer from the rental discussion where the, where the real hole in our supply of affordable housing is, or rather, our supply of housing for people in this low to moderate income range. But our summaries seem to be drawn from the discussion of housing that's available for purchase. And it, and it seems to me that, you know, the person making 12, 15, $20 an hour is in the rental market, not the for-purchase market. Because you've got to come up, still got to come up, even a $5,000 down payment is going to be challenging for somebody who's at sort of that end of the, of the wage scale. So I, I, I just, I wonder if there's another way to kind of wrap this chapter up that accounts for both the housing for purchase market and the rental housing market to talk about where the, the greatest need is, the greatest undersupply is where people are clearly cost-burdened, both in the rental market and in the, the purchase market. So it seemed to me that was just an important part of Sarah's report that, that got left behind, I guess, in the last couple of pages. I don't quite know what the solution is to that, how to, how to bring those two different data sets together here at the end. But I, I, I wouldn't want us to focus too heavily on, as I say, the, the for-purchase market and the way that we wind up this chapter. I think those, those both need to be brought back together here.
I'll see if I can cobble up something from the rental and then tie it together at the end.
That'd be, that'd be great.
Like I said, I'm doing the rental section on, on apartment complexes. And I'll know pretty definitely there's a range. I mean, I've probably one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, three-bedroom units. And the ranges for each type at each complex are this. So I can, I'm doing a chart on that right now for that.
That's great.
It might be a little more difficult in single-family neighborhoods, but my recollection from going through the rentals, there are a lot of neighborhoods that have rentals. We can sort of cobble by neighborhood. There's a range of this to this to rent in a neighborhood. But other than that, I don't know how I would get definite information from na, from single-family, any of these neighborhoods.
On the rental. Well, we have the aggregate data about rentals. And at the end of the report, it really is about aggregate data.
Yeah, I can do that.
So I, I think, I just think that would be helpful. Couple other things, and this is going back to sort of, it's what's essentially Sarah's report. I'm going to have to go back and find all my notes, but one that, that I think of with respect to this is a breakdown, a breakdown of rental units, if it's doable in a relatively simple way, by square footage, I think would be helpful in, in the same way that we've got it for, for housing for sale. Sarah breaks down it's X dollars per square foot here and X dollars per square foot there. I have a sense that the rental market is about a dollar a square foot. I'm sure that's, there's a range, you know, 20 cents either way. But I think it might be useful to have that information in here too, if it can be easily pulled together. And I know we're on draft two now and it's a little late to be asking for a new set of data. That's why I say only if it can be added in a simple way, if that data exists somewhere.
I can look at that. I think I have, I think I can get it tricked is by neighborhood because I think some neighborhoods, it's more than a dollar a square foot.
I'm sure it's higher closer to campus and less further away. And I, I expect also that there's going to be a correlation between relatively new units and relatively old ones. But in the aggregate, you know, if we can talk about averages and a range, I think that would be useful. And, and part of the reason I bring that up is I, I see this chapter as being read with great interest by people who are interested in, in affordable housing, but also developers who are looking for opportunities in the city. And if we can direct them most clearly to areas of greatest need, where there's clearly a demand for housing in this, in this kind of range, I think the more useful data we can provide to somebody like that, I think the better for this.
I think another way of accomplishing that also is requiring a certain number of affordable units with any development.
Well, we can talk about tools, yes, absolutely, sort of legislative tools that we have. But just in terms of somebody who's coming in saying, golly, I really want to develop some land. Here's this open parcel. What should I put on that parcel? Help, help us evaluate a proposal and to help a developer come in with, with a proposal that meets our needs. I think the, the clearer sense we have of where those needs are, just the better it's going to be for everybody. I think the only other thing that I'll, I mean, I have a couple little editorial things that I can send you. We don't need to talk about here in the meeting, but just, you know, kind of copy editing stuff that, you know, you just catch a few more on each draft. But the, there's this useful chart that's sort of terrifying on page 19 that we've now looked at a few times. And it was only on this read that I wondered for the first time, I think it was because there's an inflation-adjusted figure on the previous page, whether we, whether it'd be more useful to see that chart with inflation-adjusted rents, if that can be done. So I think page 18 or 17, somewhere just before then, there's a, there's a discussion that the, the average rent in town has risen greater than the rate of inflation. And I think the inflation-adjusted rent from 1990 is $854 a month or something, the inflation-adjusted average. And that was useful because you can see quite clearly that the average rent has indeed risen greater than the rate of inflation. But then this chart on page 19, which is so great, partly great because it shows the, the problem. It seems, it seems to show the problem is very, very acute, and I think it is acute. But it's a little less acute than it appears in this chart because the rents are not inflation-adjusted, right? So I think we still, it'll still show that we have a problem, but just so that we're kind of doing apples to apples. If that data can be re-grafted in a way that reflects the inflation rate over those, what is it, 16 years, I think it'd be just a little bit more useful, if it's easily done. And, and the data may not lend themselves to making that adjustment easily, but if it is easily done, I think it'd be more useful. Oh, it's on the same page. I'm sorry. That's the reason it jumped out, just right before. Median, the median estimated gross rent currently is 1093 a month. If the gross, median gross rent had increased exactly at the rate of inflation, it would have been only $854. So that's great and again, really useful. But the chart, just on the next column, I think doesn't make that adjustment. So it'd be a little bit more useful if it did. That's all I had. That wasn't sort of.
No, I think that's, I think that's good information.
And I am sorry to kind of, this late in the draft cycle to come with that. But every time I, you know, it's like anything else. Every time I read it, I see something new, so.
And part of that seems like this may be because the housing stock in the rental market has changed, at least with regard to what's been added. The housing stock that's been added in the 2012 to 2016, seems to me it's like Aura and High Street. And these are high-end rentals, you know, so that's going to pull up that average because of what's, you know.
Right.
But I think that all rents will rise, you know, the, the floating of those higher rents helps some of the, you know, rents that potentially could be lower or should have been lower, rise as well because that's what the market's bearing now.
Yeah. I think there are a number of causes, but I tend to agree that one of them is that the, is a large number of relatively high-end units that have been built in the last, I don't know what it is, 10 years. That's, that's done this.
Other comments? Okay, so before the start of the meeting, Carolyn said she had some other things to show us.
Yeah. Did you look at the recommendations and see if they addressed some of your concerns from last time? Were there any rewording or changes or? I think we'll, we'll be adding more to these as we go through with this, especially with some of the, the lots that had individuals come in and asked if we're willing to look at changing the comp plan on it. I think I put in here is studying alternative housing options for first-time buyers to afford housing in the city. Develop and recognize a strategy to address the need for additional workforce housing. I think that's easy. So I tried to reword some of the recommendations from the last meeting to take into account the commission's.
Does the, does the third bullet point suggest that we don't have diverse housing stock currently? I mean, we want to increase diversity or something? I mean, it might, just looking at the wording there.
Retain or support. Is that a, maybe a better word?
Yes. I mean, it depends on what the goal is. I mean, do we want a more diverse, the focus is on kind of the, the lower end of the, of the economic spectrum, right? Multi-million dollar subdivision.
Yeah, so may, I mean, I think Jeff's comment of maintain or support there might be the, the right thing, given my previous comment of what's being added is being added at the high end. Which diminishes the percentages that are down.
Yeah, and we're not adding high-end jobs, right? So we've, we've got this, we've got this workforce that we need to figure out how to house in this region. And that supply is not increasing. So I think this is what you're addressing here, right? But I think Mr. Boswell's point is, is right. It does sound like it's something we don't currently have. So that's why I suggested support or retain. I, I don't know what the word is.
My, it looks like the font size gets smaller below down those bullet points.
Kind of does, yes. Second to last one.
I don't want to do too much wordsmithing. I feel like we did too much of that at the last one of these. But this is not a big deal, but having discuss on here twice in a row, discuss just seems not action-oriented enough. And so I think we could maybe, I don't think it does any injury to either of those bullets to just delete discuss and say, review and implement the pertinent land use recommendations, review and implement pertinent recommendations from the other.
I think discuss is implied in review.
It just also sounds like that's all, you know, if discuss is the first word, this is what this body does is it discusses things. I think we want to make that a more action-oriented, as I say.
Another thing I found about the bottom bullet point is it seems to be addressing the previous comment, I think at the beginning of the chapter that talks about the need for housing on campus. But the wording of it sounds like the dorms, like there might be adequate housing, but the dorms themselves are not renovated to a certain standard. So maybe there's a way to encourage the update and possible addition of dorms or the expedited renovation of already under-construction dormitories so that it is sort of addressing that need for more housing rather than just newer dorms. Because I kind of read that to say, update dorms to provide renovated housing on campus. Yeah, the goal, because the goal there is to make the dormitories attractive enough that they want to live, right? I mean, that's, yeah, that's, so it's kind of a couple, a couple of different points there.
So it's just, it's just the renovated word that maybe needs to get adjusted?
Right. And I think maybe the renovate was put in there because the hospitality house is under renovation right now, which is displacing a lot of students. But I know they're, they're going to continue to renovate one a year.
From our discussions with students, one of the biggest reasons they, one of the reasons they are moving off campus is because the existing dormitories have not been updated and renovated. That there are a lot of dormitories that say there's a third floor or a second floor and there's no AC and no updated. So that was one of the reasons that was brought to our attention. That's one of the reasons students are moving off campuses. The dormitories on campus aren't at a renovation or at a stage where it, they want to move into them.
And, and today's paper had a nice article about other things.
Yeah, that wasn't helpful for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I've never, in the 30 years I've been at William &amp; Mary, I've never quite understood how more than half of the dormitories don't have air conditioning. Like you move in in the middle of August, you're there through the middle of May.
Getting hotter.
They talk about AC.
It's getting hotter.
They talk about mold. They talk about the bathrooms not being renovated. It's just total.
They're too expensive. For all of that, you get what you get.
And that, the cost of living on campus, you could get a better deal living off campus.
Off campus, yeah.
And better accommodations.
Well, should we make it a little more general, rather than just the renovated, to, to, to make dormitories more attractive to students or something?
Or we could just say to provide good quality housing on campus for students.
Yeah, 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 something general like that.
I think that might do it.
I wonder i- if there's not room to add something in there. Because it's not just always about the quality of the housing, but the policies associated with it. Because I hear that, well, I don't want to have to buy the meal plan. I wouldn't mind living on campus, but I don't want to have to buy the meal plan. I want to be able to cook my own food. I, I hear that from students and from what I understand, loosely understand is if you live on campus, you have to have a meal plan.
Yeah, in the, in the contract, SEDESCO is guaranteed X amount of students will, will buy into their meal plan. And William &amp; Mary assures that by making sure that if you live on campus, you are a member of the meal plan in one way or another.
Right. And so I, I think there's some policies that are associated with it. And some of them might not be just food-related, but they could be conduct-related and things like that. So I think it's the, the housing options on campus need to be attractive as do the policies associated with the housing. Need to be attractive to students living on campus.
Are you suggesting that we, we recommend that the college, as part of the comprehensive plan, we recommend to the college decouple the housing plan from the meal plan so that you could live on campus and not?
No, I, I'm not, I'm just broadly suggesting that, that the policies associated with living on campus should be attractive to the students as well as the facilities.
So how did, how did you word it a minute ago? You had a. Good quality.
Good quality housing.
Quality housing.
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't trying to get into that. Quality housing. Right.
I know when I went to school, I had to sign in a guest. If I had a guest from, of a different gender visiting in my dorm room and the door had to be open. Now, I don't know that that's any policy at William &amp; Mary at this point, but that's an example of a policy that would be. but that's an example of a policy that would be outdated and deter someone from perhaps living on campus. So it's just making sure that not just the, the facility is attractive, but the policies associated with living on campus or, or such. And that they can find the, the different types of housing that they want.
I like, I like Jeffrey's comment of, of potentially removing renovated and adding in good quality. I think that can address the policy side of things without maybe particularly naming that. As we also are looking at the land use in the city and don't want to dive too far into the policy side of things. If we did, encourage William &amp; Mary to continue to update dormitories to provide good quality housing. I think that has purview over both.
Are there any additional bullet points that you feel are lacking from our previous discussion?
Thank you.
Does, does the group feel like we've done enough to deal with accessory use buildings, or?
No, I think that was one of the things that we were going to, to be part of the recommendation, that we would actually study that, because that's actually a big thing to think about. But I, I definitely think that that's one of the things that we want to study alternative housing options. Or implement, you know, there's different places where that piece could be, but that to me seems like part of the study that happens after the plan.
And I think that was the reason for that fourth bullet, that from your last discussion.
Right.
I can add such as.
I'd love to see it such as, so it's a prompter.
Building units or?
Like including, including but not limited to, or something like that, because we don't, we don't want to, people say, oh, you.
Really?
Yeah, no, actually, I think we really want to have a community discussion on these other kinds of things.
Not in a bad way. Oh, yeah, it's all a bad way, right?
No. That, that sounds fine to me.
Remind ourselves that that's one of the opposite.
That we did, that we did, yeah, we did address that, because it's a big topic, absolutely.
That's it. I'll move on a little bit. We had Vernon Geddy come in early in the process, talking about 530 Millneck Road. And it's the pink area just behind the red on Jamestown Road. I got a better map here. It's currently, in the comp plan, is office use classification. You just can see Jamestown Road up there with the corridor commercial. Below it is low-density, single-family detached. You've got a little off, two-lot office across the street. You've got low-density, single-family detached in the bottom down there. And then, of course, it is currently zoned LB4 with B2 for the property up on Jamestown Road with RS1 and RS2 surrounding it. So that was a question that I know he brought up, and we haven't really discussed that as to if the commission thinks that that property should be residential. I think he was looking at a residential zoning classification rather than an office zoning classification that it currently is in the comp plan. So that's one area I think we need to have a discussion on and think about. And if we believe office is the right comp plan designation, we don't need to change anything. But if we believe it needs to go to residential, we need to state that in this chapter, I believe, in the housing chapter.
And so that's a parcel that had, on this earth, so it's been there for a long time. But before CVS was there, when there was the Texaco Station and the direct road that brought you to Backfin and connected back around.
Yes.
Yeah, before that whole corner was renovated, years ago, whatever, whatever it was, ten years ago, a long time ago now. That was part of, of a more viable potential office area with, with the through street and the other kinds of stuff. It sort of has gotten orphaned from one perspective because of the bank and the office building, the CVS that have been there. Obviously, it, I think that the idea that that center aisle, where if you turn into CVS with CVS on your left and the bank and the office building on the right, that that center aisle potentially could continue into that parcel. And so, you know, I think part of it, and I'm just trying to frame this for everyone's, you know, for everyone to think about. Some people may not actually remember that there used to be a different layout of that whole intersection there, right?
Mr. Washington's Texaco Station, right?
And, but, so, you know, how that renovation has built out and hesitated, I won't say stopped, has, has it hesitated is that it hasn't continued to build that road that would have brought a viable path into there. It's now been two comprehensive plans that I believe that that parcel has been this orphaned lot. And so now, I guess the, the discussion for us is, do we think it should stay as a place that could be built out or should become soumed by the not Walnut Hills, quasi Walnut Hills neighborhood that is what that is?
Yeah, currently the access is off of Millneck Road, which you can see on the screen. And you are correct, that driveway aisle that comes from Jamestown Road does give it access into the property. Because when we, when that was developed, that was part of the approval process. So I guess Mr. Geddy came in several months ago and said that he would like for the commission to look at some residential-type use at this location rather than an office-type use.
And that's a single parcel?
That's a single parcel, three point oh five acres, I believe. I had it on the other slide, yeah.
I mean, I'll just speak a little bit to what's happened along that street in the last five years or so. Is on the right side, between 199 and Millneck Road, there are a couple, I think there's a hair salon. There's a couple sort of quiet, um, commercial properties. And then between that and the church, there's, I don't know, half a dozen houses, a small number of houses. And then on the left side of Millneck, as you go out towards the cul-de-sac, there's been a little bit of new residential construction. So that, that sort of neighborhood quality of that street has kind of continued to head out, I guess up to the point where it's not zoned residential. So there really is only that one or two maybe buildings back on the right-hand side that are, that are commercial. What concerns me a little bit about it is making the whole thing residential is, I really see it theoretically as, as two, as two different things. There's a, there's a slice, sort of the eastern ha-, or the right-hand half, that does seem to belong to Millneck Road and I think could easily be residential. But if you made the whole thing residential, those are either really long and deep and skinny lots or there's, you've got to have access to some residential somehow off of Jamestown Road, past the, past the, the offices that front Jamestown Road, including, including Mr. Geddy's office and the CVS. So I, I guess it, it depends on, well, it seems to me that the most sensible thing is to really kind of have it be sliced right down the middle where, where the right-hand side is residential and the left-hand side is commercial. I can see a very strong case for making the right-hand side of it residential. But to make the whole thing residential, I think it's just an accident of it being a very large parcel that fronts on two roads that have two, today have two very different.
I think he was looking at doing a small lot subdivision in there.
Oh, with a cul-de-sac in the middle of it? I see.
Yeah, yeah.
I can see that becoming a Millneck circle.
Sure, yeah, right.
Small, fairly affordable housing, because there's a bus station or a bus stop right across the street from the CVS.
Probably along the lines of the, of the most recent ones that you mentioned, along Millneck, right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Because he's, and his sister sold those lots, I think. Those were their lots. Yeah, I think those were their lots and they sold those.
Yeah, those are pretty modest houses in there. I haven't looked at the prices, but just.
Yeah, to use, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Well, that makes a little more sense. I, I, you know, Demetrius Florakis always used to be very concerned when he was on this commission about reducing the supply of, or the, the kind of potential supply, I should say, of commercial property in town for its revenue-generating capabilities. So I always think of him when thinking about something like this. But having said that, if that, if that really does belong to the Millneck neighborhood, it does seem a natural.
I think if you do offices there, you have to come out to Jamestown Road.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You wouldn't access Millneck Road, because Millneck Road gives me some pause because of the width and
Well, it really is.
Number of units and the number of cars and those kinds of things
Yep.
need to be taken into account, because the width of the street is not very wide if you've been down there lately.
Yeah, it makes so much more sense to access it from Jamestown, even though it's.
Except that's a very awkward intersection, trying to get into.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a no-left turn in the evenings.
Just during rush hours.
Too close to the light.
Three to six.
At 199, people are turning, they, they see somebody else turning left and.
There's no left turns.
Pretty dangerous. So you have more people coming in there. I think it's a problem. Coming in from Millneck makes more sense to me if, if we look at it of.
Certainly if it's residential. Absolutely if it's residential. I think that's an easy.
So if we look at it as residential and say, well, there will be small lots, which would make them more affordable, and we have a shortage of affordable housing in the city of Williamsburg that's walkable to places, it, it makes really good sense to me, especially with just the concept and, and the, the surveyors and the, and the engineers will come up with a good layout that, that works. And if the layout doesn't work, then it doesn't get approved for that layout. But I'm, I'm sure Mr. Geddy's got some ideas in his head as to what will work the best.
Not all of it's developable either, because you've got slopes and you've got some.
And so you'll have the nice sluffers probably backing up to the other residential houses as well. And for, for an office space tucked back in the woods that nobody can find is challenging.
Yeah, and, and we remember the Holly Hills townhouses, that, that went to office at one point and, you know, they decided that was not feasible. And I suspect Mr. Geddy has run the numbers pretty, pretty carefully about what they can do with this.
Certainly support it as residential.
So, so bringing up the Holly Hills, Carringtons and all that kind of stuff, that, I mean, this is, this is a single-family neighborhood. I would be cautious as to what category of residential we put it into.
That is my next question.
Because, I mean, knowing, and, and I think part of it is, I think we have an interest in smaller lots, single-family detached housing. But the idea of zoning this to generally residential and having a small apartment complex moving back there, I really think I would add a character to the residential area of that area. Especially given the houses that are on the left-hand side of Millneck going back out there and talk about them as being modest and whatnot, but they're, I know like one of the Williamsburg City police officers just was able to buy a house back there for something that was in the two-hundred. And so, I mean, that's the kind of thing we want to be able to support, you know? Teachers and police officers living in the city that they work in. So, and, and so I guess I want some guidance on how to, because obviously, I guess, the bigger picture is that if we propose the comp plan that this should become residential, then it can be rezoned through our processes over the next year or so versus Vernon Geddy having to come in and pay the fees to a petition for a rezoning and all that, and it would be part of the comp plan and be supported in that way. But I think we need to be cautious in terms of what we're recommending, what category we're recommending, so it stays consistent with that neighborhood.
Right, so if you think that's a possibility, I'm happy to go back and give you some options at the next one. I think it's definitely got to be detached.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to have it be in a category that it is allowed to have twenty townhouses on this three acres or something.
My question to look at probably is, do we want low-density, single-family, or do we want medium-density? I'll look at, too, and possibly come back to you with a rec-, a staff recommendation on that, and then we can have some discussion on it.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Yeah, and, and I'll say one other thing about this parcel is, one of the, one of the things that's kind of not, I won't say counting against it, it's a very nice parcel, but it is very close to 199. So my children like to ride their bikes to the CVS along this road. And, and 199 is just right there at that cul-de-sac. So it is, uh, it's not ideal as a luxury, you know, as a luxury development, I'll just say. If, if for no other reason than that, then it's proximity to a very busy road.
There's a fence there, right?
Oh, sure, it's not like you can just walk out onto the highway.
The children, the children.
But the noise.
I'll underscore that.
The houses on, on Cole, the ones at the back end, when the leaves are down, you can see 199. You can hear it from there, so the closer you get, the more that.
Yeah, you can see it quite clearly from, from that end of the road.
Oh, yeah, and the others, the, not the parcel that we're looking at, but that other side of one, Millneck that says office, right? And you can clearly see all those offices in the professional drive stuff, that whole area, sure. But at least in terms of the residential, I mean, the Cole Lane houses are quite nice houses. The little horseshoe there, and the houses that are being, being built are very reasonable, nice houses, too. I think we want to keep it as a single-family detached neighborhood.
Yeah, I think a neighborhood of houses like that would be, would be ideal there. And I, I think that's what he has in mind, that was sort of when he made his presentation.
And I can talk to him also and maybe have him come at the meeting.
But, I mean, land use-wise, I, I can, I'm, I can settle on a single-family detached designation and then see what the market can bear, you know, if he brings forward. And if we're looking at smaller lots, then probably medium-density is the right thing. But you can bring this back to us, Carol.
And that brings me to the Thompson property, and I just wanted to give you a heads-up before you possibly see something else on this. This is that piece of property on South Henry Street. That's across from the Oaks. That's been for sale for years, upon years, upon years. This is what the current comp plan calls that a sensitive environmental area in Chesapeake areas. And as you can see across the street is the medium-density Oaks on Henry. You've got the Parkway, and we've got the conservation area that's the back end of Holly Hills that you see over there on the overhead on the left-hand side. So this is a section that is currently zoned, single-family RS1, which is our large lot size. I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that before, if anything ever comes in on that again. So I think we're going to see this probably come back in the next month or two with some other type of development, possibly. But with the numbers of lots and areas in the city getting smaller and smaller with us building out, I think we're going to see some of these areas be looked at for more residential development.
So has this ever been platted out or anything?
It's was, it's an old paper subdivision. See sort of the lots.
And then the, and the one, and the yellow one, not this one, the other?
The, you can see underneath the sensitive environment.
Yeah, the squares, no.
A boatload of little teeny tiny paper lots. The two larger lots, one is owned by the city in that green section, and the other one is owned by the boards. The main portion on Henry Street is owned by the Thompson family. The Thompson family is the one that's selling it. That's the one that's had the, the sign up for, for years. So right now, the developer was looking at a nursing home-type facility. Couldn't quite make it work on the portion, the developer portion, when you're coming across College Creek that's on the right-hand side. They are now looking at the lower portion of it and seeing if they can make it work there. If they do, they'll be, we'll be back probably December or January for one of our meetings to discuss that further. But I wanted to sort of give you a heads-up as to what the current plan shows it, zoning on it, to let you think about that over the next month or so and so you'll have a better understanding when they come in as to what they're proposing to do. Things I've mentioned that was very important to city staff was that, no matter what development went on to this property, potentially, that they had to take into account existing topo and environmental factors on the site. That staff would not recommend a development that went in and just clear-cut everything and pushed all the dirt down and made it a flat site. So I think these individuals understand that, but I think it's really important. That's one of the reasons it's designated sensitive environmental, is that all of that needs to be taken into account because of its proximity to College Creek and all the RPAs and, and little streams and, and steep slopes that this property has. There is quite a bit of pretty flat land at the very top of it, once you get up off of Henry Street and a couple sections of it, but as you, we all know. But as you, we all know, when you drive down Henry Street, there are also the creeks that, that sub, that, that those two sections are subdivided by basically steep slopes and, and streams that you can sort of see on the overhead.
And the stream there, in College Creek, I don't know if you've noticed it in driving around the past couple of weeks or so, where we've had this series of high tides and all that, the walkway has been half underwater, the first twenty feet or so of the walkway out there. So I mean, do we have up-to-date, or do, how often are the, are the maps updated that will actually show like basically high water lines and so that when we're actually thinking about what is the developable land? It seems like the developable land has been diminished because of some climate issues that have gone on over the past twenty years or something.
One of the things I had this developer look at was to actually have someone go out and survey the RPA line and just to give us a, a really update of that because of that very reason. Something that was a delineation that was done fifteen years ago is not current today.
Right, right.
So that's why with any new projects, we get an updated delineation.
We will, okay, cool.
So they have done that also. Uh, but yes, we've uh, HRPDC, we look at sea level rise. And there's really two areas in the city that it doesn't affect basically the, the homes in the city, but College Creek, where it crosses um, industry crosses the creek, we're still above supposedly on the sea level rise. And the only other area that we have for the sea level rise is um, Queens Creek over by the Mahone property in there. And of course, the slopes, we're, we're and our slopes are such that in the city that the sea level rise doesn't affect us as much as a lot of the other jurisdictions like Bacosa and
Oh, really, sure.
Norfolk and Virginia Beach and Chesapeake and those areas. So basically on the sea level rise, it's this area and a little area over on uh.
I agree, whoever, whatever develops this should take a cue from the Oaks, which kind of sits back in the woods and is part of the woods. Especially in that area, there's been woods and we've been considering it as a park.
Yeah.
Oaks was my first site plan when I was.
Memories.
It's been a long time. And the beginning of the development, they were looking to have lots, a circle for the street. I was the one that recommended the enter with the lots facing out so that you had the views.
Well done.
Young person got that one right, didn't I?
Now, this is just essentially a point of information, though. We, we don't, this is not.
That's a point of information.
Okay.
And then I figured I'd just pull up the existing comp plan map and if the commission has any other areas that you want staff to look at and bring you additional information on housing. Now's the time to say that. I know we addressed, I think, um, South England Street as far as the Colonia Williamsburg properties in the comp plan. So take a look at that in our current plan. I think that's probably adequate for what we want to do with this plan. The only other parcel I can think of that I get calls on every now and then is up on Waltz Farm Drive, the old school site. Uh, that's owned, single-family. See it at the tip-top of the map, RS2. So think about that. That's one of the ones that we continually get individuals trying to do residential development in there and because of the power line and putting in a street, it's kind of hard to make the numbers work. That's an area I think we need to think about. Uh, those are the three areas that I hear about. We also own, the city owns the piece of property Strawberry Plains Road. Thirteen point nine one acres. Show that as economic development potential. That's another site to keep in the back of your.
What's that zone? I mean, it's clearly, I assume it's residential, but is that medium-density, high-density?
It's RS2.
Okay.
Same as Strawberry Plains.
Yeah.
Subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
That's a potential site we might want to think about as far as a land, Maryland wants to say small lots. Some people say tiny houses.
Let's just say small lots.
I say small lot development where uh, lot sizes are small. Back to the house sizes that were similar probably to after World War II, where you had what, eight hundred to twelve hundred square foot houses. All rear yards. I think this could be a cool place to, to look at doing some affordable workforce housing. Only if we think that that's not going to be an economic development opportunity area. And that area encompasses this lot and the two lots in front of it on Strawberry Plains Road. So those, those three buildings that you see, two on one side and one on the other, are all in that economic development opportunity zone. The other one that we have for that zoning also is the college property across from Newtown on Ironbound Road. That's the second one that we have. And I think that definitely is an economic opportunity zone. Question is, is this?
So I'll, I'll just jump in and say, if, if we don't find a place for people to live in our community that can afford to live here, we won't have things to develop economically. Just got to have staff and, and residents uh, that can afford to live here.
So I'm throwing this out here for thought. No, don't have to have an answer today. Just think about it between now and the next time we.
And I guess I, I, I guess I'd like to at least have some input from Michelle and EDA in terms of if they're thinking about anything. If, if this is currently zoned, economic development.
Well, it's currently zoned residential.
Oh.
The comp plan shows it as economic development, so if someone wanted to rezone it.
We could do that. Okay, okay, sorry. So it's currently zoned, okay.
That's just a thought from
No, 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 that's.
Individuals talking and I tried to.
It's right by a school. I mean.
Right by a school.
It would sense, you know, to have potential stuff.
Going to have a great trail going up uh, Monticello to where people can walk in, into town.
And it backs up to the College Woods.
Walking trails behind it.
College Woods are right there.
We've also got in the CIP to study how to put the trail in on Strawberry Plains.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems like great housing to me. It seems like really excellent housing to me.
Well, what, um, maybe for next time, you can prompt us a little bit about, about some of the tools that we have just in our existing purview that we can use to um, help solve a couple of the problems that we identified and the bullet points. I mean, it's city-owned, so the city really does control it. Um, but it'd just be, I'd just like a little bit more information. I think I, I, there's an outcome I'd love to see there. I just don't know quite how to get there um, with the tools that we've got, right? So um, I'd just like to hear a little bit more from you about what you think some of those, some additional resources that we have or tools that we have that, that could facilitate an outcome that it sounds like we have something like consensus on.
But if I recall, and just, you know, just to give an example, um, I think of what Jeff's talking about, um, which I totally support, is that when Strawberry Plains was developed, so that it wasn't bought by people to have as rentals, right? There was a requirement that people who bought had to live there
That's correct.
For ten years or something like that. And some of these restrictions have been lifted over time. But I mean, those are the kinds of things that we were able to layer on, that this was going to be, you know, sponsored in some way. We wanted to establish itself as a neighborhood. Obviously, then, over time, if people wanted to move or rent or this and that, I mean, these things have been relaxed. But it established itself as a neighborhood first. And I think that's the key feature when you're like springboarding a whole section on town.
There are still current restrictions on Strawberry Plains that you have to be owner occupied. They can't be rental. They still exist.
So, so I know a few years ago, they covered up the project of the Williamsburg Housing Development Authority. So I thought maybe that's when some of the things have got relaxed. But yeah, I mean, I'm fine, I've always been fine with that, having, you know, owner apartments if you're wanting to have, you know.
When, when those sell, do they turn over fairly quickly? Yeah, okay, that's great.
They're, they're, they're at the right price point to do so.
Right, yeah. That's, that's, that's great. So, um, because I know I believe there've been some other properties that were restricted on owner occupancy and they don't sell at all.
Yeah, those houses are in the two hundred and three.
Yeah, okay. So I, I think that's.
So you're looking at probably one ninety to two ten somewhere in there.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a great concept. And I thought I remembered that you had to be a, a, a city employer or something at one point when they were building that, or a government employee? Nope, okay.
Just had to be owner occupied. The, the city has a few units that they just put up for city employees to be able to move into rental units. And it's not in Strawberry Plains. It's the other city-owned houses. One of them is at the corner of uh, Braxton Court and Scotland Street. And we own some on Long Hill Road. So when those turn, I think we own one or two on by the water plant. It's those units that the city is trying, trying now to entice city employees and people who come to work for the city to be able to offer them units inside of the city so they can be closer to the workplace. So we just open up the housing authority, just open up that program for the city. Those units available to the city employees first.
Did you have anything you wanted to talk about your?
I just want to, I found this today. This was sent to me today, so I wanted to give this to you. I thought this was interesting. Uh, information from the Real Estate Association of Realtors. I haven't had a chance to look at it in depth, but I thought it was interesting that uh, by, they did it by generation. Sent of the home buyers and the debt and what, what makes you move and what are you looking for? And I thought it for the sixteen percent of the multi-generational home was kind of interesting to me that moving back together with parents and kids and, and those types of things. Uh, I just thought this was interesting to us all to look at and maybe look at, since we're looking at this housing chapter, was good information to follow up with it. There's also a big one hundred and thirty-four page report that I'll happy to email you. I didn't want to.
Yeah, don't, don't print it out, please.
So this is a summary of, of the one hundred and thirty-four pages.
So we've been having an open, a discussion and our agenda says we need to have an open forum. So if, I will open the floor if anyone wishes to come forward. But I don't want to have a public meeting and not give you an opportunity to come forward, but I think that you're taking notes for some other point. Um, so I will close the public hearing, uh, public forum, sorry. Um, and before, just a second before I adjourn. Um, the agenda for the November twentieth Planning Commission hearing, which was not had at three thirty today, um, but it reflects out on the December eighteenth Planning Commission hearing and says that there are no public hearings. So is there any, are there any site plans or anything else, or do you expect to use that date's agenda time to do what we did today to have a work session? Okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone kept it on their calendars. I'm not sure if anyone else looked at the, the November twentieth agenda that was actually posted on the website. But I've, in scanning it, nothing is posted, so, but we should keep at least the day available for this, okay? Okay, cool, perfect. Okay, well, then with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.